All this temptation, I'm on a strict diet. Throw all these cookies behind me.
I was on a strict diet last night and I can't dare not say anything. This must be about close to everybody's pack, it must have been, I'm close to a ream of paper.
I think we killed an individual tree for council member. How many, how many rolls of toilet paper can we have made with all this paper?
Everyone want a cookie?
Love the golden Oreos.
What are we doing?
I left my bottle here from last night. That was a long night, too.
How's the coffee, Jim?
I think my hair is standing up. No, it's okay.
You should just put some cans of Ensure up there, would be good.
Call the regular meeting, our twentieth order at five o'clock, roll call.
Holheisel.
Here.
Lassie.
Here.
White.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Lawson.
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, public input, do we have any public input today? No public input? Okay, we will move on to additions or deletions. Five A, friends of the library gambling license. We will move that to new business. Oh. And item B, additions or deletions, public request for digital TV signal in the area.
Mr. Mayor, that was actually in suggestion box, so that really doesn't need to be taxed about if you want to put it under consent agenda.
Put it under, put it where?
Under consent agenda, it could be under respondents or something like that if you want it.
Well, we'll just, we'll just move it to new business and we'll discuss it real briefly, because what, why, why it was there, I guess. There's nothing we can do.
And we can move ten J for deletions, that was just meant to be an inquiry, not a voting issue.
Okay. We're taking item eleven number J off new business, which was council wages. As Joe mentioned, it was just an inquiry, so we will add that to the deletions. Under C. And that takes care of additions and deletions, do we have a motion to accept additions and deletions?
I'll move to accept the additions and deletions.
I'll second it.
Motion by, Lassie, second by White, to accept the additions and deletions. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Moving on to consent agenda, item number six, move the minutes of the special living meeting of July 16th, 2024, the special meeting of July 23rd, 2024, the emergency meeting of August 7th, 2024, and the special meeting of August 12th, 2024. Item B, approve of our bills and payrolls is audited by the audit committee. C, overtime report. D, resolution number 2024-06, exhibit C. And E, resolution number 2024-04, exhibit A.
I'll move on to consent agenda.
Motion by.
Second.
Motion by Anderson. Second by Lassie. Discussion? The discussion on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I would like to, I know it's on here, the Walker, Drew and Hani bill, but it's also wrapped in with consent agenda, I would like to just move that out, so we can discuss it at that time.
Okay.
To not to approve it as right now.
So we are going to put that under, just under the Walker, Drew, it's already there for new business under M. Oh, yeah, okay.
But it was part of the package, so.
I don't think, do we have to remove it off in any manner, Mitch?
No, it's already there.
We'll just discuss it when we get to letter M on new business.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none? Roll call?
Holheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes. Attorney's report.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Unfinished business, item number eight, heat pump quotes, pan pad installation.
Actually two different quotes, so there's a quote for the main pumps.
Oh, I know.
For the rebuild, plus the repair of the, that hanging line in the gym, area behind the gym. Um, so there's that quote for $4,285. And then the pan pad installation, I had iron heating and plumbing in last week, and they noticed a lot of mold and things in the drains, and so these pan pads will help purify the water before those home drains, so that we don't have, that's why this building is really mostly smelling right now. So that'll take care of that, so that's $3,125 for that. I was very surprised actually of the rebuild price, it's a lot cheaper than I was expecting.
Of the pumps?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor, I forgot my reading glasses on.
Okay. We'll be here, Mitch.
Alright.
Is that, what kind of discussion did you have with them about this pan pad stuff? Is that something, a lot of the buildings, I mean, obviously this building's had those pumps for.
Right.
Years and years and years.
I'm guessing that it's something that's not unusual to have, because it's gonna purify that water that's coming over them. You won't get the mold and back, back to your, that's building in the drain, I don't know.
Yeah, three grand.
I'm not a repair guy, so I don't know.
Do you understand that, Tony?
I understand the concept, I'm not familiar if that's something that's likely used or not, it's outside my scope, too.
Think I'd like to see if we couldn't do a little research on that and see, I mean, if you look through your, I mean, if everybody looked in their basement drain, you'd need a pan pad, you know, but.
I do agree, and once it hits a sewer, then it's the public utilities area, and, you know, everything. We got $18 million worth of sewer plants out there to take care of all this, and I don't think we should be trying to clarify the water going into the drain.
Yeah, I think it's just because there's mold growing in the drains right now, so.
Oh, I can see them coming in and cleaning them, scraping them, and then letting, flushing everything out, that would be one thing, but, for the, I don't know, I guess I just don't understand it.
I can definitely get some perspective.
I would like that.
Yeah, or, what are the alternatives, is there, is there, you know, something that quarterly can be poured in the drains that fights mold or something like that, you know, I mean, maybe we can do a little research of our own and see, so as far as that, the quote on the, the heat pumps, I think that's something we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to do.
Definitely.
And we're done before fall, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to have my arrange plumbing and heating come in and rebuild the two main heat pumps in the building that have lasted for whatever it is now, 25 years or whatever, yeah. So, and that is for a figure of $4,285.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Lawson, second by White. Discussion? It does say, just for, for information, they'll rebuild the pumps, new pump seals, the main pump systems, replacing fittings around, that includes those hoses in the gym that are looking, yeah, and then we got, like I say, all, all these hoses are getting old and, and glad we, they have to be replaced. It's just, it's a maintenance thing, just like stuff is on your vehicle, so.
And that's for how many pumps, too?
Well, this is, this is for just the main one. No, both, that's for rebuilding them both.
Mm-hmm, yep.
See, we've had a, we've had a backup sitting, and we were running on one pump and one didn't work, because the system is designed to have two in case one goes down in the middle of the winter, then you have a backup, so, yeah. That's for both of them.
So it's quantity one.
Yeah, up here he says rebuild the main pumps, so I think he should have, yeah.
Quantity one.
Can you verify that, Rebecca?
I mean, I have a sounder call coming through.
Absolutely, we don't want to come back for $8,000, right? That's how you understand in conversation?
Yep, yeah.
So I can add to the motion that, that would be for repairing coal pumps.
Coal pumps for the, yeah.
Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call?
Holheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes. Moving to committee reports, West Babbitt Development.
Miss Minnesota.
And we got B.
Oh, exterior lighting, I'm sorry, Amtech in exterior lighting. So we got an estimate from Amtech, so I didn't get a chance to go through this super thoroughly, but the last time we discussed this, we talked about possibly getting a price on having every other light, what, where did that fall?
It sounds like it's cost effective, which would be a lot cheaper than removing each, every other light, capping them, and then moving them to the back. So that's what we were told, it was gonna be a lot easier and cheaper than if we were. And during the power outage, I did look at the lights and it seems a lot better than it was. They're not, for the brightness, yeah, yep.
It's gone, though.
How, how's it look in your house?
It's very bright in my house yet, yeah, but it's, it's about half of what it used to be, but I, I, I don't know if the people that are around here on, you know, on South Bryant, how they're dealing with it, but it's still pretty bright. Seems that these, should have been some low impact lighting rather than what they've got, it's pretty intense. So, you know, overall, am I satisfied with it? No, not really, I think it's overkill.
Sure.
Well, 3,727 looms, is that for light? That's like God looking at you in the eyes, that's pretty bright.
It's really bright, I, I wonder if we, you know, how much do we need?
Probably maybe a thousand looms.
So.
When we had the power outage, I actually slept pretty well.
Is that something we want to send back for more discussion on, if they can tone these lights down a little bit more? Is there any possible, what, what have you learned, Rebecca?
Did they believe they can, they came and did, like, one step down from what they were, they said they can adjust the brightness, the color of the light, and the tint, like, the tilt to hot tint, yeah. And they did that, they did it to like a more standard, I'm sure they'd be able to go even less.
We should go with the yellow.
I think they did change it to more yellow, yeah, but I know they were, they're like 20 or 30% now, so they probably could go down further than.
Sounds like that's maybe what we're interested in. I guess that doesn't have anything to do with what we have sitting in front of us in this estimate, right? It still remains to be seen that the fixtures, so this, we're looking at this $4,800 because the count was off the first time.
Where are the, the lights right now that aren't replaced?
In the back.
On the back. The most of them are burnt, so it's pretty better right there.
Yeah.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, we go ahead and finish the job at the price for the next, the other 15 months.
Second.
Long as they're in their town, they're turning away.
Motion by Anderson, second by Holheisel to accept the bid from Amtech. $4,804, thank you. And then also to more discussion with Amtech on calming the light brightness down. Discussion?
Yeah, I, I can live with a dimmer light, and I don't want to, I noticed we had to pay them extra to come up and turn them down. In the audit, it was an extra fee to have them come up and dim them down, which they should have been aware that this is in a residential areas and, you know, use a little common sense.
Let them know that we're probably not really satisfied with that service, after spending that much money on the lights, and then to think they're probably want to charge us again, would, would, we'd rather not see another bill, obviously, so.
And you can add in there that, you know, they, they weren't lighting the football fields, we have the residents right here, this is their profession, they should know that already.
Right.
Exactly.
You can, you can let them know that, Rebecca.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion on municipal lighting? Hearing none? Roll call?
Holheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Moving on to committee reports. West Babbitt Development Committee. Update.
Go ahead.
What? Okay, so we had a committee meeting quite a while ago now. We had a lot of good information from Whitley Ridlin from IRRB and Paul Felteer from Rams. They kind of walked through the next steps that we're going to have to take with the West Babbitt Development, and it sounded. It, it sounded like IRRB will definitely help us out with some matching funding to match that $2 million. So we have a few meetings coming up here with MHP and IRRB to go further discuss further about the, what we had been discussing at the meeting. I don't know, was there anything else?
Leah Hall?
Oh, Leah Hall, yes, but I did talk with her today, I had a meeting with her, she will be sending me a bunch of information, and then after we go over that together, we'll set up another West Babbitt Development meeting, so. She has a lot of funding ideas and a ton of information, and she's gonna get me in contact with developers and everything, so she's gonna be working really closely with us, I think.
So Leah Hall is the, what had people from Minnesota Housing Partners? When we had our meeting with IRRB and Paul was here, they were talking about Harlan, I think Leah is actually Harlan's boss, or.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I don't know.
They work for the same, they work for the same company, so.
Yeah.
So, okay. So that's good. Anything else on the West Babbitt?
It's moving forward.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Alright. Item B on committee reports, campground committee.
Alright, we had a campground committee meeting, and there's quite a few things that we need to discuss, and we'll just go right down, right down the line with each one. And the first one is the recommendation of the campground mower purchase. We borrowed a mower from the street department, and it just, it doesn't have a tight enough turning radius, and every time you get, put it out of gear, it dies or whatever, and it, it's just not the right thing for that area, and what we were looking at is going with a bad boy, 2T Elite. ZT Elite. It's a zero turn, and it would work out perfect for out there, and we do have money in our funding for it, and I think we should go ahead and authorize a purchase of it. Your thoughts on that, Jim? What was the funding on that, Paul? What was the cost of the mower?
$5,199.
Is that the size you want?
The 48, yes, it's small enough to get in and doing all the grass spots out there, but should work out quite well, and that's, we had Dave Schenker give us his advice, and he thinks that that would be the mower to have out there as a zero turn, he said the tractor styles just ain't that bad. And he should know, he's the one that's been mowing it for the last year.
So I have a question on the contract, so you put in, further down the line, we have a contract for what they signed to be hired on, and in that contract, it states that the guests, the host guests that are there will be given a push mower by the city of Babbitt to mow the little areas of grass around the campsite area. It's very clearly written in there. So what are they cutting that they need the $5,000 mower instead of a $200 mower?
The main grass areas, have you been out there?
I, I get it, but why do we have in the contract that they're responsible for cutting in with a push mower?
Also, the contract states that the street department would be out there helping them.
I didn't see that in there.
There are only two people.
I understand, I'm just asking, I'm just, I know, I'm just asking the question because it's in the contract.
Yeah, but.
So do they have a push mower out there?
They have a small riding mower right now, they have push mowers.
Okay.
How big is the deck on the one they have now?
Forty-two or six or something.
So.
That mower is borrowed, borrowed from.
Right, no, I, I get it, it's not, it doesn't sound like it's a desired piece of equipment for any of our departments, it's, it mows really slow. It's gonna be a good mower for someone's yard in town or something like that, so on, I'm gonna, if you look down the line here, and this is just jumping around, we have two departments looking for a mower at this meeting tonight, and the Recreation Committee is also looking to buy a new mower, and they have a lot of mowing, they have mowing to do down at the beach as well, I would, I'm not against having a mower like this down there, I would like to see a way that two departments could share a mower, keep it at the campground, use it to mow the beach, use it to mow the campground, and, and maybe both departments have to invest in it, which would take the investment from the, you know, is, is there a?
I, I, I have thought about that, I talked it over with Tony, and the amount of area that we would have to mow and just do it with a little 48-inch deck, it would take for some, two days to mow.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking for the campground people to mow.
Right, but also if they would borrow it for beach attendant to go and mow, it would take two days to mow all that grass.
Well, you wouldn't end up with this mower, you'd have something that was a little bit more commercial.
A bigger one would work. Yeah, you gotta have a certain one to get around all of the turns and the trees down there in the campground, and a bigger mower just can't do that.
I think that's, that's why you have a push, that's what I have to do at my house, I, I use my riding mower, and then I come along with my push mower and do it on the trees, and then I use a weed whacker, mainly because I can't afford a $5,000 zero turn. But if we have in the contract that the, the campground hosts have a push mower, so they can do the trimming on the trees and stuff like that, I would have to take a walk around the whole thing to make a really serious, how, how big a deck is on the mower that you're requesting?
61 inch.
61 inch, okay, you could get by a little bit smaller if you had to, probably.
Yeah, it'd be less efficient, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, right now.
Also, that one doesn't go as fast.
So, so I, I looked at this, too, to try and come up with what would be the best solution. I spent some time, me and Caitlin talked about it, me and the campground hosts talked about it, and when you're losing time mowing the beach, you're, you're losing time, right? Time is something that none of our departments have.
How much time are you gonna, like, if you change between a?
So the difference is, is the commercial mower that the recreation is interested in mows at twice the speed and one and a half times the width.
Okay.
And the travel speed alone turns the entire beach into a couple-hour project.
I'm not asking the, I'm not asking the rec department to settle for this $5,000 mower. My idea is you take the $5,000 from the campground, you put it with $6,000 from Caitlin or whatever the difference is, and you buy a vehicle. If this was a small business and this money was coming out of our own pockets, this wouldn't even be a conversation.
Oh, no, I would totally do this, and I'll tell you why. It's because the, none of the mowers that the city owns time out on age, they get used on an hours basis, and they're used up in a reasonable amount of time, right? They get a lot of hours on them, they mow a lot of grass. So if you're sharing that piece of equipment, you're just piling more hours on, we just have to replace it sooner. I don't, if you go hour for hour.
It equals out, Tony, so you, so you go twice as long, if you go twice as long with two mowers, that's an equal.
That's what I'm saying, so why wouldn't you just find the appropriate tool? That's what I'm saying. So why wouldn't you just find the appropriate tool for either job?
Because we only have one storage shed and we have a logistic situation. How does the rec department get that mower back and forth to the beach?
Will they drive it up the edge of the trail?
Very little of, of the edge of the trail, except for the very first part gets cut.
I did the math because I got so much crap for driving it back and forth while the John Deere was down. Those bad boys go 12 miles an hour is three miles. It takes 15 minutes top speed to get to the beach. It's not that much when you're talking about a couple of, three hour, four hour long mowing. It's not that long of a trip, especially if they're going to do on the side of the trail. It's not unreasonable. Um, I don't, I am not opposed to sharing if it's gonna make the job harder for either department. I'm not gonna fight against that department because I don't know if they mow. I don't know what it looks like. Um, I was advised by the people that helped me, trained me, and that the two operational bad boys that I have, one of them should be replaced soon anyways. That's a part of why I'm asking for this now while there's money to be put in funding for it. But that's not talking about the John Deere, the last year of the campground, do the beach in the campground. That one is super inefficient and it takes a full day to mow the beach.
So, so here, I'll just summarize my thoughts. If, if, if we purchased more of a commercial vehicle that could be used down there, lighten it, took the width away a little bit, came halfway or a little, you know, not a sixty-one, maybe down to a fifty-four or whatever. It's not gonna add hours of mowing on it, that, that one foot or whatever.
Does the commercial grade come in at fifty-four? I don't know if they do.
I, I never looked.
There's a fifty-four listed here to.
That, but that one, though, the campground.
This is on that, because these are not commercial there.
Yeah, this, this is not a commercial grade mower. This is.
Anyway, that would, that would solve the logistic problems. It's getting it back and forth. And you have a storage place for it at the campground.
I don't consider the back and forth a logistic problem. I think it's convenient if there's going to be on the way.
If time is still valuable, that's a half hour right there.
But there's going to be on the way, too.
Right, it, it keeps the street department mower from driving down the trail and back.
So Pat, once, what, what you, what you get to, uh, pass, well, where the, right by where the rocks are, you know, the, when the trail goes.
Yeah.
Where else on the trail are you mowing?
Just a foot off the edge of the asphalt. Just to get that back a little bit.
I don't ever remember that being mowed, but.
I'll make a motion, go ahead and buy the holder forty-eight inch for five thousand one hundred and ninety-nine for the campground.
I'll second that.
After looking, I've been out there looking around, we get something bigger. We're not gonna get any closer to the trees. We're gonna be banging into things. And this is the size that definitely need. And it's gonna be more efficient when there's zero turn. It's a lot more efficient than a regular tractor, so.
On the, quick question on the budget for the campground. So it's forty thousand a year. They get four payments. Is this twenty thousand that you subtracted from the balance, the remaining of what's owed for this year?
Yeah.
So that fifty-three thousand is what, as of right now, is what we're gonna have at the end of the year when we're all done. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the table by Anderson, second by Hoheisel. Discussion? I think we have it already. I, I'll just say, I just don't think that there's been enough, uh, reasons to disqualify the idea of using one mower. I hear a few, I hear a few things, but I don't see anything concrete that puts us where we should, where we couldn't just buy one mower to do the job, so. Any other discussion? Like I say, if this was, if this was a small business.
I'll call the question. Better enough discussion.
All in favor?
No, it's gotta be.
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lassie.
No.
Go ahead. Next one is a resignation of the campground hosts, um, with, uh, they've done, the Shinkers have done a great job out there. And, uh, they came up to the campground committee and they turned in their resignation. They will not be joining us next year. And we need to go ahead and put it out for a new campground host. So I'd like to send them a thank you from the city for doing such a great job out there. And we need to go forward on this. We did have a campground meeting today. I don't know it'll help. The Shinkers would be willing to come up the beginning of May and help the new hosts break in the campground from May into June. And then they'd be leaving us for, for good. But that's totally up to the city council whether we allow that or not. Maybe we just get some new hosts.
Yeah, this would be something to consider. It would be a sort of a logistical thing to figure out how, how we would manage, uh, payment or compensation to the Shinkers. You know, if they're gonna work May and June, possibly into July. But they would be willing and we don't have to make that decision, I think, tonight, but, uh.
You might hire someone that has experience.
Yeah, and it would, uh, depend on the new people we hire, uh, do they want help or, or whatever, so.
Maybe they can take it over and go forward with it.
But that is something I think we, uh, we can consider at a different time, uh, maybe after we hire new hosts.
So I'd like to go ahead and, um, make a motion that we put it out and that the city of Babbitt is looking for campground hosts for the year of twenty twenty-five.
Well, we need to, uh, do a motion on the resignation first.
Yeah.
Do we have to accept that? So I'll make a motion.
I'll say what I said.
I'll make a motion, we, uh, accept the resignation of the campground host with a letter of good job and thank you.
Second. Motion by White, second by Hoheisel to accept resignation of the campground host and send them a thank you letter for the service. Discussion? I don't think, uh, many people know how, what a great job these two did out there and with their helpers, uh. All, all I've heard is, uh, compliments and satisfaction and the campground has remained city full and the people just, just love those Shinkers. They, we lucked out and we really got a, a good pair to operate our, uh, beginning campground. So I, I really appreciate the work they've done. Any other discussion? You're in on? All in favor?
Aye.
Item three, campground.
I'm still like to, yeah, I, I make a motion that we put out for a new campground host for the year twenty twenty-five. Put it in the paper or wherever we have to. And let's get word out there and start accepting applications.
Do you want to establish an application deadline?
Yes. Let's see. On this come out from today and will go until, um, second, the seven, seventeenth of September.
Why so short?
Is that too short?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, it's not open till next year. Let's do ninety days. Let's get the best amount of applicants we can. I would say we close it November seventeenth.
The end of October, then. October thirty-first. Goes out there and after a month or a month and a half, everything goes up.
So there's a motion on the table by Hoheisel.
Second.
Second by Lassie, or Anderson. Discussion?
Ten parameters that we, we had on the last ones.
Right, so just looking at the contract. The forty thousand dollars a year for this job. Where? So it's been a while and maybe they're, they're up higher now and I can, uh, but like Fisherman's point, when I checked with them, they were paying twenty-eight grand.
National, the national average, when I did homework on that too, because I thought it was high too, the national average, so forty thousand dollars would be in the seventy-fifth percentile. So it's not the highest, it's not the lowest. The, the fiftieth percentile would be, I wanna say they said thirty-four thousand a year. So just to give you a ballpark and the national average, not just up here.
Is, is the size of the campground in, into that determination?
Uh, a lot of them, a lot of it's tied by state, yeah.
Way bigger than this campground.
Yeah. But it's, a lot of it's by, again, I'm just letting you know what the statistics are.
To me, this would be a good time to look at that.
It originated at thirty.
There is.
We didn't get any applicants at thirty, so we adjusted it and put it out again. The, the original one was thirty, but we were opening the campground. And we had it posted for months.
Think we had two applicants.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we are not losing money with it, so I think forty thousand is going to attract some quality people. And I would, uh, I would rather stick with this. The Shinkers took that for two years. They did not ask for a raise, so. I think it's a decent, equitable salary. Okay, this one didn't bring to attention. Don't know what's the local campgrounds. I only look, I only checked with the one, like I say, and they were twenty-eight. Okay. Yeah, it's, it's still a matter of, uh, how big your campground is, but how much time you put in and everybody's gotta be there twenty-four, seven. So, you know, it's, I think it's adequate compensation. Any other discussion? Uh, is that a roll call? All in favor of, uh, polls?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item number four. Recommendation for early closure pending reservations of October.
Yes, the Shinkers at our meeting, they asked, um, they usually, um, we're open until October thirty-first. And right now, the only reservations they have is they have the first week of October, people in there. And then, um, the second week from the seventh until the tenth, there's reservations. And they were just wondering that if they don't get no further people or any kind of, uh, reservations, if they could go to their homes between October twenty-first and the thirty-first. They wanted to scoot out of here a little early.
We did that last year.
And we did that last year for them. So I, I think we should wait a couple, another month and see how the reservations are going on that.
I have a, a quick question not related to that. Did we advertise that we will allow RV storage there during the winter months?
Yes.
Okay. Have we had any takers on that? Five hundred, I think, for the, any takers on it yet?
Yeah.
Should we lower the price?
Well, winter's coming up.
We just, was it July? When, when did that? It had hit up like middle of July. And she went to the website, but it's only been up for a month.
Okay, we can wait, we can put on a different.
Didn't we, uh, come into a situation where, uh, part of the seasonal rate included this winter storage?
Yeah.
So that, uh, next year we will, uh, have to adjust that to, to establish a seasonal rate and then eliminate the fact that it includes storage and then charge a separate storage rate, uh, in the future.
We could have all of the seasonal sign up, uh, something saying that if they wanna have a sto, for a storage or not.
Yeah.
Before we open it up to the public.
Good memory, Jim. Good memory.
Oh, once in a while, Paul, there's something out there.
And your Wheaties for breakfast.
Okay, so we're gonna table that for now. Item four. And then coming under five, seasonal seventy-nine?
Yes. Seasonal site number nine. Um, they wanna switch it, the Shinkers do, and, um, it does make sense. They want number ten to be a seasonal and switch them around, nine to ten and ten to nine. Because the, they said the, the number nine isn't that nice of a site. They'd rather, people want ten more than they want nine.
And the people, the seasonal campers that are currently in number nine did come in and asked the Shinkers for our attention and requested that as well.
Right.
They would like to just switch to nine and then have.
We just have to do it in the books, switch it over from nine to be a seasonal and switching it over to ten. So I'd like to make that a motion that we switch them to around.
I'll second that. Motion by Hoheisel, second by Lassie. Discussion on switching.
For next year.
For next year regular to a non-seasonal. Listen to your customer base, right?
Yep.
Yep. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six. Seasonal rates.
Jim, I'm drawing the blank here. Maybe you can help me. I think our first.
Uh, we looked at the going rates for campgrounds around here in the area. Fifty dollars is what we're at currently. Seems to be pretty standard. I had the idea of dropping the weekly rate and just keeping a flat nightly rate. Um, you're still gonna get the same amount of reservations. Plus, in the state of Minnesota, you can't charge sales tax for anything over thirty days. So people do get a discount with the sales tax dropping off if they book for a month or longer. Where it kind of baffles out to drop that weekly discount rate. And it's a little bit easier on the people keeping it, too.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we raise, uh, the daily and the weekly, um, the daily to fifty dollars instead of thirty, right?
No, it is fifty.
It is fifty?
Fifty currently.
Ten is the thirty.
And a ten is thirty.
They're ra, they're ra, they're raising the monthly from twelve hundred to fifteen hundred.
Keep everything saving.
Yeah, and so just you a flat fifty a day instead of a week.
Oh, and no weekly, just drop weekly.
But I mean, they wrote it down in the bottom of it. Oh, that's for, yeah, that would raise it, uh, from twelve fifty to fifteen hundred. And then seven fifty to nine hundred for the ten.
We don't ever rent this tent out for months, do we?
Not for that long, no.
So Paul, you're, you're proposing to adopt the twenty-five proposal that Kirsten has.
Yes.
Down here, sure. I'll second that motion. Motion by Hoheisel, second by White.
Lassie.
Excuse me, Lassie to, uh, adopt the twenty-five proposed campground rates.
I'm the only counselor that has three last names.
Discussion? You're in on, roll call?
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes. Item number seven, twenty twenty-five seasonal renewal agreements.
It's the same as last year. It's basically just giving our current seasonals priority to renew their contract for next year.
So there's no changes, it's just more informational?
Yeah, it's not an official contract, so it's just twenty twenty-five instead of twenty twenty-four.
All right. Late moment, subs up.
Second.
I would give for your dedication and hard work. Motion by Hoheisel, second by Lassie to accept the renewal agreement.
Twenty twenty.
For twenty twenty-five.
With that, what date do we wanna open reservations? That will determine when the seasonal have to happen there.
When we done the past, what was the past?
Last year we did November first.
Yeah, we moved it up because we had February, didn't we?
Yeah, originally, the first year it was February, then we moved it to November first.
I think we keep it in November. Soon as it opens.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll add that to the. Yeah, I'll add that to the motion that we open up reservations in November. I'll second that.
Alright, still. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes. Planning commission, deep winter greenhouse project.
Okay, while they're setting up, we were approached by a woman named Heather Hohenstein about a deep winter greenhouse project that we never got to listen to her due to some factors of getting together, so I've been in contact with her, and she has sent us a video that would explain the project. And after she's done that, we can discuss it from there.
I have a question on the parcel of land though, Jim.
Yeah, that's something we'll talk about, Paul. I don't, that's part of the playground.
Exactly, and encompasses the road.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is after the presentation, you can decide whether you're going to go ahead with this. And if so, then we would look for a parcel that might be suitable.
Hello, Babbitt City Council. Thank you for making room on your agenda this evening for IRPS, Iron Range Park Sustainability. For myself, Heather Hohenstein, the treasurer of IRPS, and I'm a farmer. And I also have a job that takes me to the cities twice a year, so that's why I'm not with you this evening. But I thought I would do at least a video introduction. Have materials for you on the deep winter greenhouse project. IRPS is currently building a deep winter greenhouse at the Rock Ridge, the new school. The deep winter greenhouse is a U of M initiative, University of Minnesota, where they had five prototypes built throughout the state in probably about 2015. And so that information is in your pockets. And we would like to build one in Babbitt. And having it on city property, we could, we, meaning IRPS, we have the funding and it's our mission to maintain the outer area of the property as a park. It could be community garden space. But the reason for a deep winter greenhouse as, hopefully used as a school garden is because, of course, this time of year, when things are growing, we don't have kids in school. And then in the summer time, the teachers have to take care of everything in a traditional school garden. So the placement of this deep winter greenhouse would be ideal for young and old and encouraging, you know, for folks to know where their food comes from and being able to grow food. And part of the University of Minnesota project is the list of produce that grows well in these conditions, which it's mostly unheated, but the design of the deep winter greenhouse, as you'll see, is a deeper foundation. It's excavated as the basement would be and then built up from there. And that allows a heat sink and for that air to be circulated throughout. So as far as the produce that can be grown, it's more a limitation of daylight than it is of actual heat. And I thought I would end on this picture right here. My family's leaving Barren Farm halfway between Babbitt and the Twin Cities. So just stopping to pick some blueberries. And just want to say thank you again for having me on the agenda tonight. And I'm sorry I can't be there. I made touch with both Mr. Lassie and Mr. Quigvistoke if there are any questions. And the IRPS website is in your packet too. And of course, mostly known for the Earth Fest and the Pasty Fest. So other board members throughout the Iron Range, IRPS is based out of Virginia, Minnesota. But a couple of us live in Ely, some in Hibbing, some in Grand Rapids. So we're around the whole Arrowhead region. So thank you for your consideration and we hope to have a lease with you on city land to build and maintain the deep winter greenhouse. Thank you.
So if I understand it right, they're looking for a piece of property that will be donated to them?
She's looking for a long-term lease. And unfortunately, you know, I never did get a chance to talk to her personally to, you know, to really get together and exchange ideas. And this is the only time I've really talked to her. I thought she was going to give us a little more information about it, but this is all I know at this time.
She talked about the school and involvement from kids and stuff. It would be interesting to see what that's all about.
No, she said that they would partner with the school for running it and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
I know somewhere surrounding, like the South East is growing a lot of their own food in their cafeteria right now. And that's amazing.
Rock Ridge.
And shopping locally for their meat.
Right.
From small farmers. Pretty cool initiative if they like.
And Rock Ridge will be starting, or just started one, uh, deep winter greenhouse also through IRPS.
We got rid of that land east of the arena, right?
Yeah.
That's school and master.
Yep.
I think the school has plans, hopefully, to put up a baseball field again?
Plan, yeah. That's just what we're supposed to do. But this parcel that we're looking at, Jim, is this actually ours?
You know, I just got the idea that, son of a gun, the school stole our land. They made it into a playground where nobody knew about it, you know? Because you just went by the boundaries of the roads there. And it appears that, yeah, this is our land.
Tony, are you familiar with the?
I, no, I don't know what you're looking at.
Oh.
I think we should have a study session with this lady.
This, my question is, the Pony League, uh, that's Pony League field too, right?
Uh, it's not. Pony League field would be east of this, but, or where they practice or whatever, the soccer stuff. But, um, yeah, I guess I wasn't familiar with this track of land being arch.
I didn't know it. We assumed that it was the schools because they, that's the whole works in for a playground, so, okay.
I mean, if, if the case is, or if the, if the intent is to enhance something at the school with this type of a thing, that's probably not a bad spot for it because the kids wouldn't have to cross the road. I mean, it's, it's already on school, it's basically there. Be nice to know more about exactly what how the school benefits from this, how the kids benefit from it more. Like you said, you're expecting to see more of a, a sales letter, so to speak.
Yeah, a little more explanation, but as, as luck would have it, our zoning officer is also a school board member. So maybe I could put this on a planning commission agenda. And you'll get some ideas from Chris because obviously, this is, looks like it's our land.
Uh, one, one immediate thing I guess with that, though, she said that they'd be looking to excavate her basement. And I don't know that that particular location would be a great place to try and.
Yeah, that's pretty low land, yeah.
Yeah, but to fill it back in. Well, that's what they do, that's fine. I, I don't, I don't know, I don't understand what the construction is in total, so. That's just a consideration.
Yeah, no, what she said was they would excavate it and turn it on and fill it back in with the stuff they need. To make it. Ain't going to dig too far to get water.
Sounds like a real good idea, but I think whoever mentioned the study session, we should just have a study session and invite her. And then we, and get the zoning here. Or plan, well, either way, then I would like to have a discussion.
They can talk to her and get some input from Chris on the school side of this, too.
Yeah, I think Chris could, it involves a school, so eventually, we would have to involve the school somehow on anything we do there. So how about if I invite her to the next planning commission meeting and go from there? See what we can come up with.
Okay. Committee reports onto recreation, letter D.
The beach house roof is the first one. Um, we have a quote there from Woodland Builders for the beach, place of the beach house roof. Or Dan said it for small buildings located around town.
Do you know if he said the singles would be a thirty-five year warranty?
He, I. If it's not on the quote in front of you, then he didn't want it.
Did you, can Mr. Lindsay ever get back to you?
Uh, I did not reach out about the shop because I thought when we left the record, that we had decided we were going to be forward with it.
Okay.
Is this the only quote we have?
Uh, we had other, we had one more quote from Vertex, um, and we, as the record, chose this quote, it was better.
So we have two?
Yeah.
That's all we need, right Mitch, is two quotes?
Yeah.
For this?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure we have the.
Would this be done this year, Caitlin?
Uh, well, he had called, he had called, I don't know if he'll have time this year. He had called and asked if there was any way it could happen this year. And I didn't realize that we could potentially use the city facility or the permanent improvement fund. So I said, no, it would have to, if it gets approved by the time, it would be next year. But if he came out with either of these and he has time, it could be done this year.
This does not include anything with the fascia or anything? Because I seen some of these pictures, they, the soffit and fascia look pretty rough shape?
Yeah, I don't have the, um, pictures of that. I believe it's just the roof, yeah.
How much money is in them funds?
It's in our, in our packets under the city, it's just labeled under nine. After the, we're going to do a then, uh. It did also, um, attach, uh, Recreation Operating Fund and the City Facilities Fund, the expenditures and revenue for the both of those funds. The other two, the permanent improvement fund, that, um, we put money in there, but we have not taken anything out this year. All back into the total. I have no plans at home to take anything out there. It was right in the beginning.
I didn't get that.
It's a couple pages in.
Yeah.
This was approved by the committee?
Yep.
Approved by Senate Council.
Recommendation. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we go with the shingles at eighteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars, take it out of the permanent improvement fund.
Second.
Caitlin, I want to make, talk to them about the fascia.
Okay.
Because they're going to do this.
Get it done.
If it's replaced, it needs to get replaced.
Yeah, and if we're going with the lesser than, yeah.
Yeah, with the lesser.
To take care of that as well, because they can, and maybe they can just wrap it. If it's not completely rotted, they maybe will just wrap it, so.
Maybe get a quote on that and bring it back to us. And that way it's.
Motion by Anderson, second by Hoheisel, to go with Woodland Builders' quote on shingling the beach house, uh, three small gazebo roofs, one small hip roof and, oh, beach house. So at a cost of eighteen eight fifty. And then also to have Recreation Coordinator Stern check into with them fascia, soffit fascia. Any other discussion?
Just wondering, has that beach house been redone since it was built?
I don't think so.
I don't know, it was built in seventy-two.
That's why the shingles lasted just that.
I was married at that time and I did buy good shingles, so, yeah.
They used to be twenty-five, I don't know if they can increase the.
Thirty-five is usually standard, no?
Now, yeah. I don't think they'll last twenty-five, I mean.
But I don't know, they're not that long.
Yeah, they're just not like they used to be. Okay. Any other discussion? Very none? Roll call?
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes. Minnesota Power Arena Lighting.
So when we have our recommendations from the record to move, oh, I have Minnesota Power audit done on the arena and some other recommendations, so the capital arena has to come through here. And they have some recommendations that should be in front of you for the arena. And we don't have a quote from electrician yet, but I'm asking, asking the emergency board forward to get the quote from the electricians. And then also, we have a need of emergency lighting, the arena has no operational emergency lighting.
Didn't Bo Cox Delano, when he was, um, rec coordinator, have all them lights replaced in the arena? They're shot already?
Well, the, the emergency lighting is not operational for the arena. I think that the, the lights above the reef are pretty good and the ones above the lobby, but then when I look at their breakdown, that's where we would save the most money. If we change the ones above the reef.
Yeah, I know them were replaced.
Yeah, keep, keep in mind, that's fifteen years ago.
I know, you know, it's all.
And technology has jumped.
We still have, after the support beams, we still have thirteen thousand in the arena capital moving fund. And the cost of refrigerant went down this year by seventy dollars, so we have some excess in the operation of that tool that I would like to put towards getting emergency lighting and fixing up the other way. that I would like to put towards getting emergency lighting and fixing up the other lights in the arena.
Are you asking just to go on?
Just to go, I don't want to waste the electrician's time, so if it's something you guys are interested in, I will go forward and get the quote from the electricians and get the numbers for the security, the emergency lighting. If it's not something you're not interested in, then I go, I want to stop.
Well, if we're gonna run the arena, we have to have the emergency lighting or we're gonna, they'll shut us down in a second.
Thanks, it's going even worse.
Yeah, if they're not working, that's a no brainer.
But also the other lights, the recommendations.
I'd make a motion. We get the quotes on those.
I'll second that.
Motion by Anderson, second by White, to have Caitlin go ahead and get quotes on the work for lighting at the arena, both emergency and other. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Minnesota Power Recreation Facility light, lighting quotes.
That's the same?
I think we just combined them.
No, it's not the arena. Yeah, so this is, this is not the same. It's not the arena she wrote.
Oh, yeah.
You got four misses in the half areas. There are recreation facilities up in this building. The gym, which is one thing that was not done with the rest of the area was done. The warming shack, the outdoor lights, the outdoor ring, and the lights in the common outdoor. And the only difference here is that would also have to come out of the city facilities, because we don't have that.
Was there, when we discussed at the meeting, Caitlin, you had a cost savings for like, I think even like you had it broke down to gym, how much it would?
Yeah, it should be in front of you there. I highlighted some of it. So you have the cost, the rebate, and then the annual savings, and this gym is the largest one. But strong look closely by common outdoor, so. You don't have, you know, you can just even pick which ones you're interested in and the other ones, if you don't think it's worth it, it's not.
Those I think we should wait. Personally, I think we should wait a budget time to talk about. And we have better idea.
Yeah.
And we, you know, yeah, you're looking at savings. You know about what you read about them. But we also don't know where our budget is, and that's coming around the corner every year. So I would, I would be in favor of, you know, holding on to this information and go from there. Get the arena done first. That we know we need. And these other ones, talk more about budget then. And see where we are. That's the way I feel.
By the way, the arena looks really, really good. I've seen that paint job and spectacular. Yes, it does.
Okay, we will. I think we need a motion. I think everybody's agreeing probably, then we can.
I think we just.
Yeah. Moving on to purchase of zero turn lawnmower.
That hole is one we're replacing.
The Husqvarna?
Over fifteen years.
Okay, we've gotten our time off.
And it is a recommendation of the rec committee to go ahead and purchase this?
It was a recommendation. It wasn't unanimous, so it wasn't a recommendation.
You have money in your equipment fund?
We have, so we have nine thousand in the equipment fund, but we also have eight thousand in the year balance that we can use for.
Sure. Okay.
The John Deere that's a campground, because that's your department's, right? Will not be able to be sold on. Yeah, we would put it in the system.
Then you'll sell the other one also for trade.
Is the Husqvarna fixed now? Is that operable?
Do they take Husqvarnas in on trade or not?
Even if they did.
It happens.
We're way better to sell it ourselves.
Alright.
So this is gonna come out of her budget then, the rec equipment fund?
I'll go ahead and make motion to authorize them to buy the Bad Boy Road for twelve thousand.
Nine nine three.
Nine nine three point eight three.
Second. Motion by Hoheisel, second by Lassie, purchase of a zero turn road Bad Boy for twelve thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars. Discussion.
We got eighty-three cents.
And eighty-three cents. Discussion.
I just, I have something, and we kind of talked about this, but if I can find a one or two-year-old brand new model, like, because we went looking. So if I find one cheaper, that's not a twenty twenty-four model, it's twenty-two or twenty-three, you're all about that, right?
Yeah.
I just want to do this amount.
Yeah, right. We need that amount to prove, but if I can find a better deal.
Go for it.
Yeah.
We're all about.
Okay, so that'll go for, you know, either of these, because I think we'll, I think on the ZT Elite for the campground, I did see a couple of those that were older models, so, and I did.
And there's some attachments that I want to add.
Find one of those, so, yeah, so hopefully we're doing better than as advertised here, so, just to add.
Any other discussion?
Just speaking of lawnmowers, I did get an email, I don't know if all of you guys did, about that Mr. Babbitt is coming in the end of September to visit our town. The founder of the town, their grandchildren are coming in, and they want to see, and I think you're gonna show them the campground and all that. And just have everything looking good.
I can forward to me.
Yeah, please, forward all the department heads the email so they know what. It is, the town is looking very good. It is. I'm proud of it, so. Okay.
That would be Mr. Colonel R. Babbitt, a New York State Judge.
Yeah.
That's who was named, we were named after.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Go call.
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yep.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lassie.
No. Okay, moving on to new business. One more, open positions for two casual labor.
So this is just to cover our bus when we get sick. Last year, I ended up working really sick for about a week to not shut down program B at the arena, because Joe was out sick, and I worked pretty sick, and I'd like to have some backup people sort of. So these would be people like Tony Hasler, Flappy, but not nearly as much, but resting. But, yeah. Employee.
So you just want to list like Tony has, is what you're asking for?
Then I can refer to for when we have.
In case you need.
Would that would. We have discussed this at the rec meeting. Would that include, I mean, like in the winter time, that having those people available will only help you if you're trained, if they're trained.
Yeah, so I will have to train them, or they'll have to have the knowledge. Not many people know how to operate a ZM, but there's also snow falling up my area, so if I was down, or Logan, or both of us were down, we need somebody to keep things going.
So you'd probably incur some hours that you'd have to pay them.
Yeah, we have to have some hours of trying to get people trained, but that's also if we get, we don't have a good history and have people apply.
Hi, Michael, do you have enough money in your budget to?
Well, that's.
Take down a couple more people?
Well, that's why we'd be, when necessary, you know, needed emergency, I guess we'd have to add a little bit for training in the beginning. But otherwise, it would just be emergency situations.
I'll, I'll make a motion, go ahead and authorize her to have open.
I'll second that.
Talk about in that budget time, what you think we need to cover that.
They're gonna have a better idea, but I think get the word out there so we, if we even have any, but that's interesting.
Motion by last, Anderson, second by Lassie, for Caitlin to put the word out for two casual labor position openings. All in favor? Oh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
New business, street department casual labor rate is getting increased.
Go, what, go ahead. When are you gonna take over?
Tony, that must be your street department.
Yeah.
What's going on?
So we adjusted a labor rate of pay for a CBL driver back in the day, but the casual labor rate hasn't been increased in forever and ever. I don't even know when, like twenty years ago, but is that thirteen seventy-five? We pay the summer kids fourteen dollars, fourteen fifty if they come back the next year, so I'd just like to bump that to fifteen an hour. So just a buck and a quarter on that.
I move we adjust the rate to fifteen dollars an hour.
Second.
First.
So is Mike?
I want to see.
Because this is just, is this gonna adjust streets casual labor rate?
That's exactly what's on here.
Well, technically, your department didn't have a rec casual labor.
You don't have it yet. You don't have one, so we'll have to.
So, okay.
It'll probably just follow in suit.
Motion by Lassie, second by Hoheisel. Any other discussion? Go call.
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes. Street Department permission to attend twenty twenty-four Expo site call?
Go to school, yeah.
How many days?
Uh, just two.
In your budget, right?
Yep.
Budget for that?
Yep.
Joe Billough?
Yeah.
He's out, but.
Yeah, he's, right, so he'll be coming back here about that time. So he'll either be in like his last week off, or he'll be back. But yeah, he wants to go too, so we're both gonna.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Lassie, second by Hoheisel. Further discussion? Go call.
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes. Street Department excavator, this was on.
So we approved the street department excavator at the last meeting that we had. I went back to actually order the machine and found that there was an error on the quote. So it needed adjusted. The thumb attachment was not on that machine. So even with the increase for the thumb attachment, it is still the most affordable competitive model that we looked at, and is still the recommendation.
What did we, what was your rate though?
It was seventy-nine thousand something and a eighty-two something.
Eighty-two five ninety-six. I'll make a motion to accept the new quote at eighty-two five ninety-six with the thumb attachment.
I'll second.
Motion by Hoheisel, second by Lassie. Any discussion? Still within your budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. Go call.
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Lassie. Anderson.
Yes.
Alright.
You have to seat back.
Thank you, thank you, bud. Simon, welcome. Wait up here. We have a microphone with this little podium up here. Thanks for coming.
This is where?
Yep.
This was, just, yeah, we're not pretty loud. Thanks for having me, for inviting me. I am Simon Chatter, I'm the community and social performance manager over at New Range. We thought we'd take a little bit of your time to give an update of what we've been up to and what we're gonna be up to over the next year. We've been pretty quiet over the last year or so, and that's because we had this big merger, and Tech's been in town for a long time, and they've been pretty supportive of you guys, but we had the big merger between Tech and Glencore a little over a year ago. Sorry, a lot of you know about this, I just want to make sure everyone knows where we're coming from. So we, February last year, there's a big merger between Tech and Glencore. Tech bought the Masaba project here in your backyard to the table. Glencore brought PolyMet, who is no more. So we're in another this fifty-fifty joint venture between Tech and Glencore, two of the giants in the mining industry. So over the last year or so, we took a couple of steps back to look at how we can strengthen this project, how we're gonna get across the finish line. Everyone knows we had some permitting challenges. We were fully permitted this time last year when I was approached to take this position, and obviously now we're not. So we want to make sure, we've got to get our four of four back that was revoked. And to do that, we, you know, we really want to make sure that what we do going forward is our best foot forward going forward. So we look pretty hard at the project. We look pretty hard at what came up during the permitting process. We look pretty hard at what needs to be done to meet our new parent company's requirements to progress the project. And we now feel like we're in a pretty good position to start moving forward again. Although, some people who've seen the site could probably attest to the fact that we've done a bunch of work out there. There's been a ton of money spent. We stripped out the old LTV concentrator. Twenty-four thousand tons of steel have been pulled out of there for recycling, sixty-five thousand tons of concrete for recycling. It's, those who know what that building looked like before, it's now just a big hollow shell. It's amazing what they've done. And I would invite anyone here who'd like to kind of see the old building, to see, you know, what's been done out there. It's truly impressive. We're also taking the old LTV offices and redone them. Our GM says it's lipstick on a pig. It's an old building, but it's looking pretty good in there. We actually have a quite a nice work environment now, which we didn't really have for a while. Our workforce has gone from about twenty-seven just over a year ago. We're now over sixty people, so hiring. I mean, basically, the message there is, although we did face some challenges, we're absolutely not backing down. We're, we're certainly, we have unbelievable projects here, you know, between Masaba and the old PolyMet project. Our parent companies really see a lot of value in progressing these projects, and they're willing to put, you know, more resources into it to both getting the site ready for us to open when we get there, as well as, you know, making sure that the team up there is well at that, so we're pretty happy. In terms of going forward, I don't know, you might have seen, there's been a bunch of press over the last week or so. We've formally come out and said, okay, this is what we're gonna do for the next year. That's kind of unusual of mining. We don't typically like to tell people what we're gonna do ahead of time in the mining industry. But the reason we've done this is we just want to, you know, we want to be open and transparent about what we're doing going forward. We want community input as we go along, and let them know what we're doing, have anything to comment, you know, let us know what, if you have any concerns, have any suggestions. So four major studies kicking off as we speak. Probably the biggest one is looking at tailings. That was the thing that was challenged, you know, probably the most during our permitting process. The current plan is to use the existing tailings facilities and existing tailings deposition strategy, which is upstream down, tailings down construction. That's where we've seen some of the issues around the world in terms of tailings down thirty or so. While we feel that the existing tailings down design is solid and it was permitted, this is an opportunity to take another look at that. Is centerline more feasible for us? Would downstream be an option? Obviously, footprints would increase in if compared with those, those options. Something we're also gonna consider is input, tailings disposal. We've got a bunch of holes out there. What would it look like to position tailings in some of the old bits? So, you know, recommendation as we go along. Obviously, that comes with permitting challenges and a lot of design implications. What will that look like? I don't know. We'll take a look at that later in the course. That's tailings. The next area we're gonna be looking at is the current. Um, that's tailings, the next area we're gonna be looking at is the current, uh. This one has a thirty-two ton per day throughput, um, you know, when that was proposed, that was a pretty good option in terms of, of concentrated design. Things have progressed a lot in the last few years, forty thousand tons is just, you know, a far superior, um, design in terms of, of, uh, efficiency out there, you know, if you look at what's available in terms of mills and, and things like that. Uh, so we're gonna look at that, you know, uh, we do think that there could be some, some emission improvements with some of that new technology. Um, we've, obviously there's a, a financial benefit to us to, to processing faster. Uh, but there are life of mine implications, and obviously the mine doesn't get bigger, we don't have more than we have, so we'd be mining it faster. So that's the second area we're looking at. The third is, we committed to, um, an ore plant, hundred million dollar ore plant during our permitting to, to get the, our, whatever emissions down to the, the lottery standards. Uh, we stand by those commitments, we will not budge on that, but again, you know, technology has advanced in the last few years, and now we have access to both of our parent companies' resources who are, you know, doing work all over the world and a lot of water treatment work, maybe we can do even better, uh, maybe we can do it, you know, more efficiently, better cost, or, or even improve on those, those standards, so we're gonna look at that as well. Um, and then the last thing we're gonna look at is, the current design has us using rail on site to transport ore. The pit's about six miles away from the concentrators, we've got rail all over site, we're gonna transport the ore, uh, by diesel locomotive. That's not a great option when we're looking at, uh, greenhouse emission commitments that both us and our parent companies have, so we'd like to look at, at conveyors. Uh, obviously improvements on, on emissions, uh, but there's a footprint related impact, we're gonna be building conveyors on site. So, that's what we're gonna be looking at, uh, we don't really have any answers now, we don't have any major concerns with our current project design, but this is a great opportunity to, to do even better and to strengthen the project. I'm gonna start talking there, that was a bunch, do you guys any, have any questions from you?
Simon, in the past, uh, you know, we, as a city, has written letters of support and everything. If you need that from us, now that you're a new name and you're gonna go forward, um, please let us know, and let us know what we can do to, to help, I, you know, we stand behind the project, we always have. And, so whatever we need to do, if you need something, a letter of support, uh, resolution, whatever, we're here to do that.
Well, thank you, we, we certainly appreciate that, and you know, uh, it, it's been interesting, last week we announced, all the work we've been doing, the, the feedback has been incredibly positive, you know, over the last week. More positive than we expected for outside of, of our immediate region, so that's, that's really good.
Aside from what Glenn has said, and I agree with him totally, in, in what other ways can the community help you, guys? I mean, what, what are your anticipated needs once you get working or going, what, what are your things that you might have problems with, uh, workforce wise, housing, what is, what are your concerns?
Well, I mean, obviously the workforce and housing is, is always a concern up here, uh, Joe can attest to this, if he took me a long time to find a house, it, it's tough up here. Um, and I think that's gonna be a challenge faced by any, any, um, organization who's trying to expand or develop out here, so those conversations about housing and workforce are always valuable to us. In terms of direct support, I mean, I, I do feel like we, we have, you guys really appreciate that, um, I'll be, you know, trying to come in and give you guys updates as we go on, make sure you guys know what we're up to. Um, selection cycle coming up, and then, you know, we might see some, some interesting news coming in the next few months, um, so, yeah, I'm not sure.
Is there a, uh, as things go forward, you get closer to the day when you may start and stuff, the the support type companies that, you know, what do you see, or, you know, what, what does the company see there, like, you know, we're, we're, we're in the need of an industrial park? And we would hope with everything we have going on in the area that someday there would be support businesses for some of these precious metal mines.
I mean, honestly, if we were, when we opened, there's gonna be massive demand for that, you know, the North Net project, the smaller project, it's not, it's not massive. Um, we'll know that Masaba, the, the second project has the potential to meet significant down the line, uh, but that we're still in scoping, so it's, it's quite a way out, but I have no doubt, I mean, we all know what the, that the economic impact, like impacts of mining can be, and, you know, the growth that comes from that. I mean, that's, that's only area you can't, you can't really talk against, I guess, money, in terms of that economic positive impact. You know, one thing that, um, we're still very early in, in terms of thinking about this, but at some stage, something that I would like to do from a community perspective is, is look into community, I mean, well, good neighborhood agreements. You know, sort of formal agreements with surrounding communities to say, these are our commitments in terms of communication, in terms of transparency, in terms of making sure you guys know, um, what, what's going on. Um, so, you know, at some stage, I'd like to start having those, those conversations and, and working with you guys to see what that could look like, cause I think it, it would be a, you know, we would define what that, those sorts of agreements would look like. So that, that's probably a conversation for some time in the next year as well.
Thank you.
I know I talk really fast.
All right.
Sorry, sorry, if I was unclear about it, please just, uh, call me out on it.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to discuss, anyone who would like to come on down? Have them, if anyone would like to reach out, anyone that would like to come and visit us?
I, I definitely would like to go up there and see what you guys got going on.
See you tomorrow.
Okay, moving on to eleven E, ten E, Lake of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. Comp Plan.
This is our workers compensation fund that, um, it's renewed every year, you just have to pick which type of premium that you would want, which is a different perspective. Um, the one thing that's different this year is, um, there'll be a five percent reduction in the premium non-stokey credit for workers' comp coverage for police and fire departments, if members have certified that at least ninety percent of the department are non-stokey. So, and I'm gonna have to, uh, submit that to the first of the year.
Keith? How many smokers you got?
Perfect.
Lovely like there. Which option will we, what do we use you down on?
And Steve, that's what I was supposed to figure out, and I forgot to do that part, but I think it just is the regular premium option, option, cause what it looks like.
We should question Glenn, what is, what was the premium was that last year?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's. Right. I'll make a motion, go ahead and authorize the signatures and put it under the regative premium option.
Second. Motion by Anderson, second by Hoheisel, to, uh, go with the regular premium option on the Lake of Minnesota Cities Insurance, which was comp. Discussion. Discussion. Hearing none, go call.
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lassie.
Okay, letter F, ten F. Roxanne Wright, heightway annexation. Come on up Roxanne, if you could use the microphone.
Anyway, last week I came to the PUC, and I'm sure y'all know that we've got issues with their sewer. So, um, the, the PUC is not interested. But I have to, ann- annexation?
Yes.
That's what they're telling me, okay, annexation, what happens to the taxes out there?
What happens to?
Our taxes.
Oh, well, that would be, St. Louis County would come in and assess you.
They already do, but then, once, if you get annexed by the city, then what happens?
Then you're, then you're subject to the city's tax levy. Just like any other property in the city.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Cause I know I live in a boroughs, but I know people in unorganized.
Yeah, yeah, once you, once you, if you were in, if you were brought into the municipal bondage of the city of Abbott, you would then be subject to the city of Abbott's taxing jurisdiction, which would be the city's tax levy.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
What's your levy on?
Well, I don't know what, I mean, they'd probably the most, I, you know, I, I think that what you would wanna look at is if, if there's address here too, is you can look at a similar commercial operation and see what they pay for annual real estate taxes.
Could you just call me a tester?
Yeah.
And ask them if we're moved over where, where would I, my taxes?
Right, right, yeah.
And the next thing, if we got annexed, the liquor license wouldn't then come through the city of Abbott?
Yes.
Do we still get a liquor license?
Yes, why would, well, why wouldn't?
I, well, I'm asking, I'm asking, because I know certain jurisdictions, you can have two liquor licenses, you can have three immediately, that's why, that's why I'm asking.
I don't think we're, uh, limited to any number, uh, at, at least I've never heard of it, uh.
And I, that's why.
You know, I think our license is about a thousand a year, uh, for liquor, and then a two hundred dollars for, like, Sunday.
It's nine hundred, three hundred.
Nine hundred, three, okay, so I was, I was close.
Those are yearly and Sundays are more?
Nine hundred and three hundred, I guess.
Nine hundred, three hundred, and then two hundred for. Two hundred for Sundays, three hundred for off sale.
What else was I supposed to ask? Okay, what is the base for water and what is the base for sewer, base rate?
It would be, it would be the ERUs that you would use. We would, we would get, come back to the PUC, and we would judge you on the amount of water that you guys would use, and sewer for a facility.
Okay, cause I just, I just know for my power, or, in this, you know.
I'd have to look, but I.
Whatever makes the base rate for the power.
I'm, I'm thinking, um, the junction is two ERUs. Now, don't poke me on that, but that's where I'm thinking.
And I don't know what even what that.
One ERU is a hundred and five dollars.
Oh, ERUs, one equals a hundred and five?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
As I get.
Wouldn't you say Paul comparable would be like fishtails?
That fishtails are, you know, if you, if you have a conversation with Gary out there, what.
I already know fishtails is approximately four hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, what, what Gary has out there for the junction when I was running, that would be.
Or not, fishtails is about the whole thing, I don't know, fishtails is about four hundred dollars a month, I do not know what you're talking, I have not seen that. Okay, but that's, I'm just asking questions, I know I have to talk, I have to go talk to the county. You know.
And then you'd have to ask.
My naturally responsible decision.
You'd have to ask Mitch down there what the process is with the annex.
Voluntary annex.
Mike? I don't, I lost the guy's last name, anyway, he's who I have to talk to, he was on vacation till like fifteen. So, and I did send emails to him, but, um, yeah.
Remember the freeloader Friday? Were you part of that?
No, my mother.
Oh, okay, that was, yeah, that's, that's some, uh, that's some great Babbitt lore though. I still have the T-shirt.
Do you? I still remember that night vividly.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm just happy you woke up. I did get him a price and cost to do it.
The irony is all comes full circle again.
Yeah, it does.
The other thing, just, just so you're aware, when we, when we did this with the junction, we were able to, uh, pass Babbitt, the junction, the county, I triple R B, we got all involved. County was willing to throw some money in.
Oh, the county also?
Yeah, county was also with us, uh, in this discussion that took place. So it is something that we look at, and they helped out the junction quite a bit, and the reason was we annexed them. By annexing, it was considered a new place for us, and, and as soon as you mentioned jobs, they're on board.
Economic development.
Economic development ends up being that, so there is some things that you would wanna take a look at, you know, also.
Why?
Yep, but there's a lot to it, it took us a while, Mitch was on board when we did that, and, uh, you know, it was, we went down to I triple R and, uh, office and had some meetings down there, and.
Well, I, I just know that I am not physically healthy enough to do it anymore, so. That's my goal.
I, I triple R B also has, um, a lot of good grants for businesses right now, like infrastructure, helping with your sewer and water and things like that, so.
I know the PUC, they said Minnesota Evolution, something, oh, yeah, Commission?
MPCA.
MPCA, that, okay, whatever, somewhere.
Becky would, I wonder if you could hook Roxanne up with some contact information?
Yeah.
Just to make some phone calls to I triple R B, and then if you would know, like, when you're talking to the county, well, that's something the city that approaches the county after this process gets going, and initiates some of this as well, or would that be something that she would need to be first?
I think you initiate it at the same time.
Yeah.
Cause with the water, what happened about the junction, just a mystery is, we had a well out there, but the county, when they, when we started negotiating, said, you know, there's no reason why you shouldn't put city water out there, as long as you're going there. And so they, this is where they started chipping in a little bit of money, it wasn't a whole lot, but there was some money there, and, you know.
Well, I'm just.
So.
New system.
Yep.
Adding to Babbitt, cost, cost wise, which, you know, if you get annexed and you cut off your face because now you're paying.
Yeah, you have to look, yeah.
You know.
It's the big picture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you have to start the process to get the answer.
I know, and that's why I'm here.
Yep. Yep. Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Gee, citywide cleanup day.
We have gone with section thirty disposal, the previous years, we always do an annual citywide cleanup day where we offer dumpster services, we leave them out from, typically it's on a Saturday from nine to noon-ish, eight to noon, something around there, where people can drop off any larger garbage items, garbage, even if they need to, on one Saturday every year, citywide cleanup, we usually go through section thirty disposal. They're, however, no longer doing the roll-off services, so we had to look at other options, we got a quote from G-Men and then a quote from Udivich. G-Men, um, charges a little bit, so section thirty always charged an extra if you brought like tires or a match or something that they charge you more to dispose of at the dump. G-Men charges a little bit more on top of what the dump charges, Udivich said that he just charges whatever the dump charges, and then we have staff here to collect that fee that we then charge to them. He said he would be, Udivich, if that is the route that you choose to go, he would set aside a separate dumpster for those items to go in, as long as we have someone here to collect the money, or whatever the item is, it's just based off of the dump spray. So, those are the two options. Previously, we'd done three dumpsters with, um, section thirty, however, last year, I, we didn't fill them, so I'd say two maximum would be needed.
Take a motion, we go with the Udivich roll-off on September twenty first. That's a Saturday.
For dumpsters?
For two dumpsters.
Can I set the time, Glenn, at all?
Nine to, nine, let's go nine to ten noon, like we've done in the past.
All right. I'll second that motion. Motion by Anderson, second by Lassie, to use Udivich roll-offs on Saturday, Sep. twenty, September twenty first for Citywide Cleanup Day, nine to noon. Discussion?
And we'll have to find somebody who we got there. We either.
Essentially one of us in the office. Sarah said she would be willing to.
Okay, just one.
Okay.
Clarify that so we don't.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes. H, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, approving I triple R B funding for the recreation parks.
So this is that, um, two hundred thousand that we got from legislature this year, so this was just the resolution that we sent to I triple R B to, um, start the process moving for us to be able to get that money.
So move on Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, offer the signatures.
Second. Motion by Anderson, second by Hoheisel, to approve Resolution, to accept Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, approving I triple R B funding for recreation parks. Discussion? There are none. Roll call?
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes. I, Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, St. Louis County Maintenance Programs.
So this is a county sponsored program. Um, what the county does is they put a collective agreement together to get a low bid on doing all of the striping. Uh, we've done these several times. This is also how we did the chip seal program. Um, same thing, so it's a grand total of about three thousand bucks and that's to re-stripe, uh, all of the yellow and white, uh, center and black lines in town.
And Muggie, you have?
Go ahead. Yeah, we'll take it right out of the street, uh, student program. Yeah.
I will pass, adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four oh nine.
This is for next year, second.
Motion by Lassie, second by White, to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, St. Louis County Maintenance Programs. Discussion? There are none. Roll call?
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lassie.
Okay, K, waive gym and table. Waive gym and table chair rental fees for the friends of the library on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-four and October eleventh?
It's supposed to be twelve.
Supposed to be September twelve?
October twelve, sorry.
Oh, twelve.
Fall Festival again?
Fall Festival.
Make motion to approve living, uh, rental fees.
Second.
Motion by Hoheisel, second by White, to waive the, uh, gym and chair, table chair rental fees for the Friends of the Library on September fourteenth and October twelve.
And then?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Tort Liberty.
Mr. Mayor, first, they also had during, um, during this, uh, weekend, they wanna do bingo. So we had, do you have the? It's on the, it was added as. Oh, was it? Okay, never mind.
We're coming to.
Scratch that.
Okay. Okay, oh no. League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Tort Liberty Coverage Waiver.
We.
You would, you, you don't waive, you don't waive.
We do not waive.
Yeah, do not waive.
Do not waive.
Right. So as indicated here, you just call it the, uh, the first bullet point there that you, the city does not waive the statutory tort limits. There's a form that we have to.
We, then also just needs, no, then also just needs to approve that we are not going to, or we're, do not waive it.
No.
Make motion, you do not waive statutory tort limits.
I'll sign that. No waiving at all.
Motion by Anderson, second by Hoheisel, not waive the, uh, trust tort liability coverage. Discussion? There are none? Roll call?
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes. M, Walker Drew Hahn, twenty twenty-three audit bill.
Well, they added on ten thousand dollars more than, um, what we were told did originally. And then. Your email is at the beginning of the package. So there was my email for response. It was the beginning. Giving us your package, so it was ten M, it was something that wasn't in the initial one, so I included it as.
Yes.
Um, so basically, I had asked them why it had gone out so much, because, and they said that they put twenty-five thousand dollars extra time into working on our audits, um, but they were only going to charge us ten thousand dollars more. Um, so I asked why that was. And they just said that, um, some of the things were not reconciled, um, the campground activity, um, there was transaction batches that were posted in the wrong periods. So.
Did they give us, um, did, did they give us something in writing what that ten thousand dollars is for?
That's.
That's a good.
Yeah, that's explaining it supposedly, but, um.
Ten M.
What, what, was it ten M? That must have missed it, oh, ten M, right here.
Ten M. And standing. Right, there's another one, right in the very beginning.
It's on your new.
Getting a new package. So you flip it all the way over and. They did also have, with, uh, one of their staff members, but I don't think that should be our issue for them having to work more. I think bring one out.
I had them pull up the contract for Walker Drew and Hahn and put it in everybody's box if you guys happen to read that. Yep. Um, our fees and these services will be at our standard hourly rate plus out-of-pocket costs. Except that if we agree to our gross fee, including expenses, will not exceed twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. With an additional four thousand dollars if a single audit is required under the uniform guidance. Anything other than that, it will be discussed with us, the city council, and a new fee assessment will be added according to the contract. So, when they, did they talk to you?
They just sent me that. The, the talking about it is just this email correspondence, you know.
Maybe we, we should have Tom Kelly come in and discuss this with us. It's next to ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
I know it was a mess. We had three different clerks in there at that time. We had Kathy, my wife, we had Kathy Barah, and we had you for one month there.
And no clerk for a little bit.
And no clerk and everything was put on, on the Sarah. And, um, the books, yes, they were pretty screwed up. And things weren't getting done, but how can you do, get anything done when you only had one person in there? Walker Drew and Hahn, he's been with us for a long, long time and they do do an excellent job for us.
Tom's been really, Tom, I mean, he would, he would come up for whatever kind of meeting we wanna have before, so.
And that would just be an explanation, or we could, uh, what was in the, uh, what was in the audit? Was that paid the whole thing? Or in the?
Oh, in here, yes. Yep.
I would say with Dan, what do you, what do you contract to great always and then have him come up and explain why we should pay him more?
The extra ten?
That's why.
We'll do the twenty-eight thousand, six fifty plus the four thousand.
Plus the four.
That'd be thirty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Thirty-two, six fifty.
That would be my, my recommendation was.
And then invite Tom, I'll make that a motion, I'll go ahead and pay him.
I'll second that, motion by Anderson to, uh, pay the, uh, audit, your fee of twenty-eight, six fifty and the additional fee for uniform rights, single audit, four thousand. And then schedule a meeting with Tom Kelly.
For the rest of the, do you?
Okay.
Maybe, maybe for the first meeting in, um, September third. Have one with you, we done us.
Do you wanna do it before the meeting or during the council meeting?
Doesn't make any difference, we got two hours in running right now.
Yeah. Uh.
It'll be short and sweet, I would think.
Yeah, during the council meeting.
Yep. Put him on, one of the first on the agenda, so we can give him in.
Okay. Discussion, motion on the table? Uh, yeah, we got, you got the motion.
Yeah, they did, you have the one.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Audit signature process.
Can I see a ball?
Oh, yeah. When we did the audit years ago, every, everything that was bought, there was a signature that we did, we signed off. Now, the new way, they said all you have to do is sign the signature page and all them things that were bought, items that were bought or paid through the city, they don't get looked at. Just, they could look at them, but there's no signature to it. There's no signature to the councilman that like right now Joe and Jim would do. They just sign the top page and that's it. Um, I know with the public utilities, we, we go through the same process, I, looking at our bills and you learn a lot and you see a lot when you go to pay the bills. And you have to put your signature on every line item. And I think that's the way we should run it. I think it's a lot more quality and a lot more thought that goes through it and you see where our money goes. Instead of just doing the top page.
It does help, cause I go through them all anyway, even though we only send the top page, but when you're going through all them pages, sometimes crap gets mixed up. So it's nice, cause when I know I'm done with it, I can just sign that page. And then I move on and I'm gonna go put it back in the folder. Sometimes they stick together and then you give us some extra ones, but that's how I catch, oh, it's stuck together. Um, with this new way, some of that stuff, I don't know if it's getting missed or not, but.
So I, I would like to see it stay the old way, that, uh, when we go to sign off, we sign off on every line item that.
Every individual bill instead of.
Right, exactly.
The check summary.
That's it.
Make a motion.
I make motion to keep doing it that way.
I'll second it.
Motion by Hoheisel, second by White, to use the old style process on signing off on the audit.
On the bill audits, yes.
On the bill audits. Discussion?
Lot more.
I, I don't have, uh, I don't have any problem with that. It's a lot quicker for Joe and I, and I know I look through it, but, but here's the other thing that I would really insist on is that when we get a department bill, that whoever's submitting the bill should initial, okay, and do that. Now, Tony does it an awful lot and, uh, but there's some that they get missed. And how do I know, you know, if I get a, a rec bill or a cop bill or, or something like that? And I would really like to see the, uh, department heads be held accountable to sign it so that I know it's a legit expenditure.
Right.
So if we, if we could do that in conjunction with Joe and I signing it, I feel a heck of a lot better.
Maybe we could have staff send a memo to the department.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of it is multiple urban heads do sign. It's just the cable and that's probably my fault, I'll take that one. It's mainly the like recurring like contractual services that happen, the ones that happen. And I do go to move and I initial every one of them myself, if I look through all of it, and I initial each invoice too.
So if I can get some sort of department head approval, I feel a lot better.
You know, who made the motion on it?
I talked to. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, going on to, oh. Library.
Elaine, what are you doing? What are, what are we doing? I mean, you're, I know you're applying for a permit, where are you, what are we doing? Bingo? Pull pens?
Oh, pull pens.
Gambling?
Split the pot and then you can dip your hands on a two liter bottle pop.
Okay.
Um, this is what we've done for the Pid Mitchell Days and
Yeah.
We, because we're such a small organization and it's five oh one to C three, we don't need to get their state license. I talk to, uh, two people down in the state gambling control board. It's with Minnesota Statute three forty-nine point one six six. We just need to get permission from the city council to have the bingo.
And you can do this four times a year?
We can do it four times a year. The reason we don't need to get a state license is because we don't give you nothing prices.
Sure.
If you have five thousand dollars, then you have to give them. We don't even hit fifteen hundred dollars in a year.
So, so has that been a change then? Cause when I ran the VFW and we did the bingles all the time, they were free. You went through the county, it was Kim was her name. And you just tell them when each year, what four bingles you want and they just send us a little, it was free. They just give us a permit, so we don't have to do that anymore, is what you're saying?
No, we don't have. Did you say it went through the county?
Yeah, there was a, it was through the state, but there was somebody at the county that would sign off on it.
No, we don't have to.
Okay.
The exact age, just that we have to agree to four, four times a year. You can only spend, um, the profits on certain things, which everything was backed in the library. So, we're just asking for a.
Make a motion, we go ahead and authorize the signatures for the application.
Okay.
Motion by Anderson, second by Lassie, to authorize the, uh, library game license. Roll call?
Hoheisel.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Don't know what the digital TV thing was, uh, you?
It was a common box. Yeah, the suggestion box in the hallway that was left in there. Um, was it lighter? Did you copy the letter? Yeah. It was a new part of it at the beginning of the.
I guess we all wish that Kirsten could take care of that so we'd get digital TV. I guess we all wish that Kirsten could take care of that so we get digital TV. Please? You'd even save money. All right. That's the end of that discussion.
You could, uh, put a note above the box that says order sling TV. It's like fifteen bucks and it gives you all the local channels. And you don't even have to have a TV company to pay with your phone app.
Next council meeting will be held on August twentieth at twenty twenty, twenty twenty four.
I forgot to change it after I.
Oh, yeah, September.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving forward into the Babac Economic Development Authority. Thank you all for coming. Calling the regular meeting of Babac Economic Authority at seven oh eight. Roll call?
Hoheisel.
Here.
Lassie.
Here.
White.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Lassie.
Public input, any public input? Hearing none. Moving on to number four, approved minutes of regular meeting held July sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
So move.
Move by Lassie, uh, Anderson.
Second.
Second by Lassie. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Additions or deletions? Seeing none. Loan update, how's that looking, Kirsten?
Great.
Um, other than, it's not other than Marie is just making, there was a clerker error this last time. She's still making the payments, so.
Thank you for the loan update. Moving on, finished business, seeing no unfinished business. Any new business? None.
Jim? I have nothing. I'll move to adjourn.
Motion by Lassie, second by Hoheisel, to adjourn the meeting.
All right, I'll, I'll go with that.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Relate the pickleball.
Wow. Marathon meeting.
I don't know, can one of you guys, you young guys, help me carry my packet to the shredder?
I filled mine in the sweat of juicey vibes.